Educating, Informing, Serving. Fact TV, Keeping Government Honest. You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the Town of Westminster Select Board Meeting.
Right. It is 6:30. I will call the meeting of the Westminster Select Board to order Wednesday, October 25th, 2023. Any adjustments to the agenda?
There will be a motion to approve reply.
Adjust the agenda, yep. Under new business?
That will work. Thank you.
Do you want to...
What?
Do we need to assign it somewhere?
Do they win a no letter for support because it's not...
No, we have to make a motion.
We do have to make a motion.
So we can do it right after that? And move? Make Road Formans Report H and make the burial plot G.
Okay, so...
Sorry.
H is going to be the... H is going to be the road foreman. And what's going to be... I'm sorry.
So I just put the burial plot before Chuck.
Oh, you did, okay. You'll like that.
Yeah.
So, are you taking out something?
Nope.
You've got to add something then. You're just going to move everything down?
Moved it down, yeah.
Okay, alright.
Sorry.
Oh, it's fine.
Any other adjustments?
You just made the note that you're adding it to the agenda.
Okay, thanks, Millie.
Yep.
Acceptance of minutes, October 11th, 2023.
Yeah, we have a few issues, so...
Three corrections.
Yeah, three corrections. First one's Meyer. It's Lou... The second thing, was it in there right? Was on the amount we did for the roof repair, we okayed up to 2,000. What we had in there was, we okayed up to 1,300, which was the bid, I think, they gave. But we overrode that to 2,000 because we wanted to assume...
It is not what the recording says.
Really?
You just blatantly said that you were going to accept that. I do have the... I can go back and listen.
If that's what the recording said, it's...
It's okay.
If that's what it said, the recording...
You can imagine that you want to...
I think we should. I think that was under 10.
Up to $2,000.
If we go up to 2,000, if we assume once they got up there, they're going to find a few more things. So let's see.
That was my recollection, dim as it is.
Yeah.
To go back to make it to 2,000?
Yeah, so if we want to change that.
Okay, yep, no, that's fine.
Maybe we could stick with the...
Up to 2,000. Not to exceed.
Chances are, they're going to get up there and find a few more.
The minutes are reflecting what did happen. But if we actually want it to be 2,000, we could have another...
Not to exceed?
Then we could have another agenda item on this agenda.
Yeah. Can we do that?
Yep.
Let's do that. I think it'll take a few seconds.
It's... So you've got to add it.
I know.
Okay, sorry.
We'll just, we'll put it after Chuck, we'll make it easy.
Put it after Chuck, so you're going to do the town hall roof?
Yeah.
I will go back and listen again, could be...
Jason, we were texting, and I brought this up to him, and he thought the same thing.
Okay.
Your recollection is the same thing.
Yep.
But yeah, we could have... Could have not changed or whatever your motion.
Is Jason here remotely, or is he not here?
He's not here.
No, he's not. 2,000, check it out. Yep, and...
He's on his way home.
Another one?
The other one was this...
Oh, the other one was...
Speed limit.
Oh, the speed limit was, that was just pretty minor. It was to 45 was what the change was, not 40. We had to change from 50 to 40, but it was changed to 50 to 45.
Yeah. Paperwork says 45, but I'm, it's quite possible that I missed both on the recording.
So...
It's a pretty minor change.
What is it being changed to?
It is being changed to 45.
45, yeah.
From 50 to 45.
And...
And I think I have... Is that a stretch?
It's the... In front of a parent membership.
And...
It's 50 miles an hour, and it was a pretty dangerous place.
No, no, I don't mean that. I mean, we're... Said, reduce this from 50 to 40 miles per hour, change to 45. Okay.
Yeah.
Recording stopped. Recording in progress.
Sorry, I lost internet on the computer for some reason. Yep, you're right. It's due to 40.
Okay, so, we're not...
We're not changing that. We're not changing that.
Okay. Nice.
Alright, motion has been made and seconded. Over in favor?
Oh, I don't, I don't know who made it.
Oh, Kevin Mc...
I read the motion, yes.
Dan?
Steven seconded.
Steven seconded.
I'm Steven, thank you.
All in favor?
Of state.
Oh, you weren't here, right.
Alright, any communications and public comments? Alright, moving on to unfinished business. Town Hall safe update. Dan had given a name of an engineer to Ally.
So what happened here was, he couldn't do it, too busy. So he gave her another name, she called up the message, that sort of stuff.
Okay.
So it was...
Okay.
There's nothing to report.
So you don't... So nothing to report?
Alright. And the AquaDuck update, I will take responsibility for not completing the tasks I wanted to complete for this meeting, so I'm tabling that too. I'll take responsibility.
Okay.
So moving on to new business. Pine banks road damage, which we discussed at the last meeting. And Chuck spoke with Bazins and a couple other people. And Bazins are the only ones that are available with the right equipment to perform the work, and they can come next month. And so they are on the schedule. And it was 25,000?
They said between the 20 and 25,000 that we had discussed.
So we just need to make a motion to... Yeah, I'll make a motion that we...
Approve that.
Approve that, going around the bidding process.
Yeah.
And what if the...
I think, well, yeah. But I also, I think you've got to make a motion to approve the expenditure out of your emergency...
Contingency.
Funds. Your contingency funds to pay for it when that happens.
So, I'll make a motion that we put this money, take the money out of our contingency fund up to $25,000 to pay Bazin Brothers to do their repairs on the pine banks, circumventing the bidding process.
Why don't we say overriding? Circum, overriding?
Overriding.
What we actually are doing, as opposed to...
Right.
But let's, let's technically, I did call three different companies, and they were the only ones that were interested in doing it. So we didn't, we didn't really go around the bidding process.
They're overriding the bidding process because we...
Yeah, we're, we're...
No, no, yeah.
We're pulling ramp here and saying... To get it done, but we didn't get it done when it's...
But we did, we did exhaust all our resources to try to get the...
We did rewrite through all this, so we're good for this.
Motion has been made.
And seconded.
Motion is made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Of state.
Okay.
With explanation, I wasn't here for the discussion, so I, I don't know where they did land that money, not that I wouldn't be, I just, I was not present for the discussion. Wait for them.
Moving on to the school street discussion. So there have been a lot of emails and complaints about traffic on School Street, and...
Despite our traffic thing?
Yes. So there's questions about what to do on School Street.
You're just saying traffic, we're not saying speeding.
Speeding, burning out, just, yeah. Complaints have been from essentially single household. There might... I'm trying to get more data from the Sheriff's Department. Options for things we could do that we've discussed have been, you know, we could get our own... Our own little speed signs, except if the little trailer is not helping with the speeding situation.
If there's a trailer there right now, I'd have noticed.
Yes, yes. So if that's not helping, you know, this, they're willful violators, essentially.
We don't know it's not helping, we just know that there continue to be complaints...
Correct.
From people who can observe the road from where they're at.
Correct. And it's primarily, you know, willful violators. It's like a group of young kids who are, so...
What time of day, I mean, do the communications we get from the residents tell us what time of day they're...
So the Sheriff's Department can collect that data. They can do, and they have collected that data in the past.
Well, what I'm thinking is, is the sheriff is on for certain times of day. Is it, is this happening at a time when they're on, so we could ask them to patrol School Street, or is it happening at a time they're off?
They have patrolled School Street. They have actually spoken with some individuals. But, you know, the other options are a little bit more extreme, and I don't know if the cost benefit is appropriate for the situation. You know, speed bumps and speed humps and raised crosswalks and things like that just don't seem appropriate. But I don't know, I felt like it was something the board should discuss, given the repeated...
Here's, here's the thing. You got a couple kids that...
Right, that's the problem.
They go out at night, they drive down the road, there's no policeman there, and then they come back the other direction, burning out. You're not going to stop them.
No.
You're either got to, you've got to put somebody out there with a camera all night long, taking pictures and trying to get them busted. But the reality is, winter's coming, they won't be doing it in the winter. It's going to go away, and they're going to grow up, and it'll probably be a phase that'll go away.
And that was essentially my conversation with the sheriff.
It is also, I guess, the influences, I'm not sure. The influence is that they're doing this in the evening?
Yeah.
I can vouch for that too, because I live nearby, and I can hear them. They race down 5, and then they turn onto school, and they just, you know, yeah.
And so it's evening, but of course, I mean, still very regrettable and dangerous if somebody's walking at night. But it is, it's not directly interfered with schools, school time. They're not outlawing when kids are getting out of school or going to school. But there are plenty of school events in the evening. Is there an impression it is late evening, or is it... 10 o'clock or 7 o'clock?
11, 12, 1?
Yeah, I would say it was later evening. I mean, I have heard it other times, but mostly later, like 10, 11. And then in the winter, it's replaced by the four rulers. They're going out in the fields, and then they'll come out on the road. I had to like, I was out for a bike walk last winter, had to jump off, because I didn't know what they were going to do. They came out of the field, and they came around the road, and they're just all over. I mean, it's not that often, but...
We could ask the sheriff to come through in the middle of the night occasionally.
But they're only on until 10.
Yeah, so these kids, yeah.
Yeah, that was kind of my conversation. Yes, Chuck.
One of the ideas to suggest is Vtrans or Wyndham Regional have traffic counters that they can tell you what time this is happening. If in fact you've got an influx, there's 200 people a day speeding on School Street, or one a month, we can actually collect that data and find out what time it's happening and how frequently.
That makes some sense.
Before you, you know, put in speed bumps or any of that stuff.
Collection device in some way look like it might be taking a picture of you, is it like a little light or something?
Right.
Might slow people down, that's what I mean.
Right, right.
And just the, if there is something new out there, which appears to be looking a bit like a camera, even if it's just collecting data on, on item passing as opposed to a license plate passing.
Right.
It might dissuade them and cause them to go hot dog elsewhere.
The sheriffs did have a camera on a telephone call last, last summer?
Oh, they did, I wasn't there.
Sometimes.
It might have, but I just didn't know.
I think it was last summer, a year ago. But... I just didn't know if the board had any other suggestions or ideas for...
Does it just collect the number of speeders? Is that what we're talking about?
And their speed, I think.
That's what they can, they can, if they're speeding, how many, what time.
It's a service we can request.
Yes.
Of course, you requested that.
Sounds like a little step. You want more data, we're...
That is good.
That is good, and lastly, hopefully the Lumpy's data collects us who are the parents. And then, you know...
I probably could help with that, too.
Can we get them a high school diploma, maybe admission to Young New Mexico State University?
Just, I don't know how realistic, but if the town agreed on like a particular fine, you can actually put a sign like they do with, I don't know, seatbelts or not, but what, you know, where it says, such and such a fine for speeding.
In the school zone.
In the school zone, yeah.
Yeah.
Something like that.
I don't know what the legality is of that, I don't know either.
Well, you can. My opinion is...
It's a sign, yeah.
I put signs out in Westminster West, right at the end of East Park and Brook Road, or, yeah, South Valley Road.
South Valley, yeah.
Yeah. And no dumping, $250 fine. You know what they do? They dump right at the bottom of the sign. It's just like, you know... They take selfies of themselves going by the sign that says speeding, you know, $50. Yeah, they don't care, until you hit them in the wall and actually find them. The sign doesn't...
Yeah. Alright, so we'll get the data. Okay. Any other comments on School Street discussion?
Do we need to make a motion to get that, or would you say, please, contact the state and see if they can...
Well, I'll talk to the state and Wyndham Regional and see what I can make out.
Okay. Alright. Moving on. Thank you. Moving on to salt purchase. So we have three prices. American is 90, so this is per ton, and you get 500 tons, it's not in your package. It's 500 tons every year is our estimate. American is 95, 50 a ton. Cargill is $86 a ton, and Apalachee is $90 a ton.
Cargill, I'm sorry.
Is 86.
86. And Apalachee?
Is 90.
Where do they come from, how is...
So...
We store all the time, right?
Cargill should be the cheapest.
Yes, they are.
Okay. So Cargill's up in Rockingham. Apalachee is in Albany, New York. And American has a place now in West Levin. It used to be in Claremont, they moved...
Did they bring it here, or do we need to go...
No, no, they've already, yeah, yeah. No, all this is delivered prices.
All delivered prices.
All delivered.
Is it all apples, apples?
Yeah, pretty much, yeah, yeah.
So you're happy with...
The stuff in Rockingham, the cheapest price there is 50.
Yeah, so your suggestion, Cargill's, that's what we used to have.
Yeah. And the thing is, it is in Rockingham, so if something happened...
Yeah.
We had to go get it? It's not that big a deal, right?
So I'll make a motion, wait.
So for the record, what is the best price based on your recommendation, the name of the company, and how much money we're laying out?
Cargill at...
$86 a ton, which would be $43,000 a year.
For 500 tons.
For 500 tons.
500 tons? Yep, I don't know if they...
Since we have calibrated all the trucks, we don't use that much salt.
Glad to hear that.
But it's a good base, you've got to have a base number to go with. These people want to have an idea, so we kind of reserve, we always have, that was the number.
Do they, do they drill her all at once, or just as you need it?
I call as I need it, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, so we're not actually buying 500 tons?
No, 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 no.
Up to 500 tons.
Up to 500 tons.
We're, we're kind of giving them an idea that we could use up to 500 tons. This is, yeah. But if we don't use it, we're not going to get charged for it, we're not going to have to take it, it's not a... Typically, what I do is in the spring, I look back at our salt and sand budget, because it's all one line item. And what I try to do is buy 250 tons of salt, fill a shed back up, and 3,000 yards of sand, if I've got the money or it's close to it, with, because it always goes up. So if you don't, if you get it in the spring as soon as you can...
Oh, so we have some stored there now?
That's right, we've got a full barn full of salt right now, and I bought off last year's budget, which you've got the price right here.
Is the, so the salt's undercover, of course?
Yes.
And is, is the sand undercover too?
No.
Okay.
No. And our salt is actually in a state-owned building. I'll tell you who I know that, we do not own our salt storage. How can it improve?
The purchase of 500 tons if needed at $86 per ton?
Up to 500 tons.
Up to 500 tons. Sorry.
Is it $86, or is it...
It's $86.
$86, perfect.
Thank you.
Motion has been made.
Who seconded it?
Yep, who seconded? Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Are you signing this, or do I sign this? Okay. Alright, moving on to ARPA proposals. I was not at the last ARPA meeting, but Chuck was there. There are two proposals, and Allison Lakeland is here to speak on the one regarding the church. So you might as well go first, ma'am, so you don't have to hang out.
Allison, please something?
Yes.
Well... We ran into some significant repairs to the lift of the church and also to our boiler, and it was not in our budget. It was a shock to have received these bills. And the reason that I applied for ARPA is that many more people outside of the church use the church building than the actual members of the congregation. Like, we have a funeral, we have the Hallowell singers, we have Mary Kate Brass singers. League had a meeting on nutrition, and the Pinafore had a meeting there. That was this fall in the last week. And the church met there once on Sunday.
On a Monday night.
So, I mean, here is five other people using it, and the church using it once, so, you know, it's, we feel this obligation to keep the lift, because, like, for that funeral, there were a lot of elderly people there that we don't know, you know? We don't want them not to be able to, you could go to these very important ceremonies. So, I don't know if you have any questions for me, but...
Well, thank you for being here, Ms. Lakeland. Is the church open pretty much to anybody who wants to? Is everyone included for these events if they're within the range of that?
I suppose that if there was a radical, reckless plan, you'd plan to, that we might, we'd like to, no, but otherwise, we don't discriminate against...
The entire community, though?
Right, oh, yes, yes.
And these, these, these are essential, you need these to be done.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
And, and the work has already been done, correct?
Yes, and we, we couldn't pay it all at once, so they let us pay it over time, so right deal, but it's still unpaid.
It's still in the process.
Got to make the wing mirror, all my family uses that, 30 pounds.
What is the total amount?
So 2,839, so...
Motion to approve the ARPA funding proposal was submitted to the Congregational Church Westminster West for the amount... So listed under the ARPA funding preliminary application with attached providence invoices.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just a question, I see that this, each of these pages of documents is marked 2023 on it, on the top. Is that just because that's the date of the printing of the format?
Yes, yeah.
Just wanted to check for that.
You have any other questions?
Not at all.
Okay.
Done, good.
Thank you for coming.
Good job.
Have a wonderful holiday. Bye, my name's...
Stop being sorry with your daughter the other day.
Will.
Hi, there's Sandy, there's Vermont, elevator, and there's accessibility.
That was all for the one?
I, it looks like it.
Yes, they were all her employees.
Yep, yeah, one's for 150, one's for 2,000, and one's for 49, I think, yeah.
Alright.
Is there a...
She was so old, and she went back for...
Is this...
I thought there was going to be another ARPA.
Another ARPA?
Nope, that's not starting to business me. Alright, moving on.
There's no, there's no other ARPA.
That's the...
That I have, anyway.
Oh, really?
What do you have?
I, yeah, I thought there was going to be another ARPA thing, too, but...
It's a whole bunch of...
Is it Nutrals Food Show Incorporated?
No, it's a whole bunch of...
That was not supposed to be for today.
Jim, Jim Robb's proposal for School Street, there where else?
Isn't here. So...
So there's only the one proposal?
Which... I guess, do we... I guess we should leave, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't have all those numbers in my head, so I can't...
Yeah, we can move on.
Yep, moving on. Alright, bike path on Route 121.
So I'm Alan, and I'm a member of the Rockingham Select Board. This is Bonnie Anderson, a member of the Rockingham Walk and Bike Committee. Harry Fox, the director of the Rockingham Church. We are here to seek your support for a walk bike master plan, and have a location for a new planning grant that would provide us with planning for infrastructure for pedestrians, bicycles, in terms of connectivity and safety for both towns. Through historical accident, our towns are interwoven in all kinds of ways, and Route 121, Route 5, Westminster West Road, these are all areas that, where bicyclists and pedestrians are operating. And the, for a long time, going back to Stephen's father's time, people have been dreaming about a bike path that would carry people from Bellitt Falls to South River, obviously crossing through Rockminster. And that's one of the focuses of this plan, but it would be an overarching look at how bicycle pedestrian infrastructure could and should be developed and could be funded. The Rockingham's Planning Commission Select Board have approved this, this application. The Rockingham's Planning Commission Select Board have approved this, um, yes, this application. And the application is due November 1st, uh, and Stephen will tell you, the Planning Commission in Westminster approved it unanimously that meeting last week. Um, there would be, it would be up to fifty thousand dollars, a five-thousand-dollar local match, and we have decided that it would be fairest for Rockingham to pick up seventy-five percent of that, Westminster to pick up twenty-five percent of that, if you grant us. That would be twelve-hundred-and-fifty dollars from you guys, thirty-seven-fifty from us, for a total, um, with the, the state match of fifty thousand dollars.
The state pays forty-five thousand of this?
Yes. So Gary has been, uh, give me a seat.
Thank you.
You guys, we, we were here in July, and Stephen, you weren't here that time, you never complained that we were here. And, um, it is a, shouldn't we, uh, well, the elderly is, is, your select board, like our select board, probably got a survey from the state of Vermont, it was passed a few weeks ago, but a plan to, uh, build a bicycle path from the Canadian border down to Massachusetts, New York.
On, on this side?
On Route 5, yeah, following Route 5. So that, the, um, bike pedestrian infrastructure is a big thing, and there's, um, a lot of money out there for it. There's a lot of need for it. And, um, bicycle pedestrian infrastructure is a good economic investment. Brings lots of things, people to a town, it's that money. It also provides, um, something which your town plan mentions, which is, um, recreational abilities, or recreational opportunities for, um, residents of your town and our town. And so that's our pitch, um, Bonnie, you want to say anything more?
Well, I, I, just that I've talked to a lot of people who have expressed that feeling. They cannot, a lot of people who ride regularly between Techton and, um, Bellas Falls, in the road that's safer either with a, either on-road or off-road bike route. Uh, and walkers too, uh, I mean, I've seen people walking more there, it's not, it's crazy, but, um, and also Route 5, so just all these, all these tricky places that aren't really safe, uh, are keeping people who want, who would be riding more, or at all, so.
So this is why it's, it's based on just, for, you're hiring someone to do the plan, and give us map, so it's just a...
Transitivity, yeah.
Yeah, and they, they conduct all kinds of, um, public events where people come and say, "I want to walk here, I don't feel safe walking, riding my bike here or there." And Gary, you can, you can...
Just like to say that, um, the residents of Westminster and Rockingham have been, um, working for a long time on various trails, and one of the things that a study like this does is it, um, it gets funding to, to build out trails, to make connections. So when, um, uh, the, the reason that, uh, the state and the federal government will, uh, provide a lot of dollars to do these studies is because when they, um, provide even more dollars to build them out, they want to make sure that diligence has been taken, that, um, there's been public engagement, that they have the support of the community, um, that, uh, safety concerns are taken into account. So, uh, it, it sounds like, wow, fifty thousand dollars just for planning, but it's, it's, it's really, it's the first domino to get a lot of work that both our communities have been jointly doing for a couple of decades.
And one final point is that we, Rockingham, will manage all the grant applications and all the paperwork. We have a staff, the person Gary, and then Betsy Thurston, who's, um, his assistant. So you guys wouldn't have to deal with any of the, um, grant application paperwork, I was in signing a letter or two, and we would report back to you. And there would be a public gathering in Westminster to, uh, maybe, maybe Northwest Westminster maybe in, we don't know exactly how they would do it.
Yeah, we don't know.
And people would be able to say, "Here's what I want to see on the, the back Westminster Road," or on the, um, West West Road between Saxon River. And I, I see a lot of bicyclists, particularly during the warm weather, using those routes. So obviously, the, the infrastructure challenges are massive, and you just think of Route 121 with those houses that have their front porch three feet from the road.
Yeah, there's no room.
No room. So, so how other towns have covered these kinds of things? And the Brattleboro example that I think I gave you this summer shows you kind of what, this is a firm that we, one of the top bidders, we actually spoke with this afternoon, and they, you can see what they did, I think we gave you samples. Just a couple of weeks ago, as a result of their plan, the Union Street intersection where, come, the Route, uh, Route 9 coming in from the west, um, there's, uh, Union Street is that street that dives down. And that one was really one of the intersections that we studied, and the construction crews just finished fixing that intersection using the plan that was developed by us, so.
Um, I understand that, that, that on the, on the, sort of central focus of the first stage of this is 121, or at least it's been your focus for a while, and, um, that a lot of that, um, or the initial portion of that is well off 121, it's running through the Basin Farm and off 121 before it joins, um, by the, uh, 121 bridge over the, uh, Saxon River.
That's one, one, one...
One, one, yeah, one proposal of it. And, uh, what I want to say as a bicyclist is kudos to that idea, um, and, and to keeping it off uh, the highway. I'm, I'm a frequent commuter bicyclist in, in Putney Road and Brattleboro. And, uh, the solution they have there on Putney Road is done. There's so much, I mean, there's short sections of bicycle lane.
Right.
And then they stop so the traffic can go across to, to enter the bank, or the, uh, auto dealership, and a little bit starts later on, and besides, you're always right in the traffic. There is also a nice little sidewalk there that's rather, rather loose, and you can bike on it. Uh, it's a bit bumpy, but, uh, it feels so much more comfortable getting off the road. And if you're wanting people to have comfort, bicycle commuting, or just enjoying bicycle, kind of have them not mixed with cars, um, because that's, you know, even if there's a lane there, it's, um, not a, doesn't stimulate you to want to go there.
No, you're sure.
If you drive on that road, you're, "Thank God, I'm not biking." So, um, on Putney Road, and, uh, I, I do bike on Putney Road, um, a little bit bold that way, but, uh, it is, uh, not a smooth solution, and sometimes one has to spend that extra money for something that's actually curved off from, protected from the, from the traffic. Used to bike in Holland some, and they'd have separate drawbridges over canals. For the bike paths, it was like, great.
Ladies and gentlemen, if I may, um, move along, um, this is a great thing, I'm going to fully support it. I just want to be clear, or maybe you could be clearer, that the feasibility is quite, uh, the feasibility study that we're supporting, uh, will this encompass, uh, some of these particular variables that Stephen was just going over? So at least when people do ask a question as we move forward, that this is comprehensive? Look at the plan, this is where it's going, if you have any questions, this is a contact person. That's all I'm concerned with.
Just to concisely respond to that, um, the, uh, the, the plan in Brattleboro was 2023, so, uh, you know, one of the instigators for a, a plan is this type of situation that Stephen is talking about. And in this plan, while, um, you know, Rick was saying, or we were saying that, um, uh, you don't really have to do anything, that's just in terms of the mundane paperwork. You have a, a lot to do in terms of providing input to the process and the consultant, so, uh, everything that you're bringing up, and in fact, a lot of the discussion today was, well, what, um, what areas do you want to focus in, what areas does Westminster want to focus in? So, uh, whether it's those particular, um, uh, characteristics of, of biking and safety, and what, uh, feels comfortable and good, or what areas in town you want to focus on for, um, or what types of connectivity, um, all of that is the input that we're looking for.
Fantastic.
So whatever you want, I mean, they're gonna do what we ask them to, and that's...
And we'll have time as we go along to have, but right now, you need some money for us to get this on, get this going.
Yes.
And that's twelve-hundred-and-fifty dollars?
And some signatures for an, uh, uh, application, yes.
So I want to make a motion, okay, uh, to go ahead and authorize the...
I think Pauline has something to say. Pauline?
Go ahead. Sorry, Pauline, my apologies.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm a little high, I'm a little confused, because I thought this was off the table. I thought the town had said, "No," but I'm listening, I'm listening. Um, as a Route 121 resident, I have a lot of concerns. You know, diverting it down Forest Road and up around in Church Avenue, I don't think that's going to make the residents happy at all. And at best, right now, the pedestrian and bike traffic is very dangerous, has always been dangerous from Bellas Falls to Saxon River. I never understood why that was a major bike route for bike, um, tours, um, whatever. Um, so, yeah, I'm a little confused, I would not, unless it, we entered into eminent domain where people would give up a swath of their property, I would do that, I would do that, I'm right on 121. I would give up enough of the front of my property to make that happen, but I don't know that there's a lot of, um, other property owners that would be willing to do that. And even doing that, it's such a narrow road. It, 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 it's, it's dangerous for two-lane, um, traffic, not to mention pedestrian and, and bike traffic. So, and then you get to the roof, and then you get to the bridge. And what's happening with the bridge now does not allow for, um, a safe means of passage through the 121 bridge, and that's a done deal, that's not going to change. Um, so that's, I don't know, that's my two cents, um...
Thank you for the nickel.
Thank you.
Love you to death, I really appreciate it, and I appreciate you bringing that up. As far as I'm, as I'm concerned, though, this is just a feasibility study, so we get a better look, a more holistic look at exactly what...
Correct, but my understanding was the town was like, "No, we're not even paying for the feasibility study." I might be wrong, but that's, that's what I thought, um, it was. I, I definitely could be wrong, but anyway, that's, I'm zipping.
And it's here, when you guys brought it to us, we supported a letter to, just to support them, it was a letter of support is what we did. We did say we wouldn't give money, we never got there. This is the point where they're asking for the money. And my feeling right here is, if we can save one life, let's twelve-hundred bucks. You know, so let's, let's do it, you want to go through the motion?
Right, but that, uh, Pauline, thank, thank you for the, those are good points.
Having a living on there is really, yeah, it's gonna be hard to get any way.
As this goes along, we can, we're gonna talk about it further. We'll talk about it further, but it, it's probably better that we have something in writing, and something comprehensive, that people like to have to...
For twelve-hundred bucks, we can figure out if this is gonna work, I think that's money lost.
I'd like to make the motion.
Wait, one more thing.
Yeah?
Where are your twelve-hundred dollars coming from?
You really want to figure it out?
Well, you spent it all?
I have not spent all my money.
I think it's coming out, too. That was, that was an ARPA fund.
No.
It's an ARPA grant.
But all of your, all of the things you, you know, there's no...
There's no wiggle room, wiggle room, is that what you're saying?
I, I'm not sure if there's any wiggle room, I don't know where it would, I don't know where it would come from. Without...
So we're making a motion pending the fact, we could do it pending, uh, that we have the, we have the funds available for, uh, this outlay. Can we do that?
I mean, I'm sure we do, but I, I...
Yeah, we do.
I, I, I think we got twelve-fifty, but I...
The motion, the motion is apropos, and it just is a...
Chair makes a good point, I, yeah.
Pending a category.
Yeah. So can I continue?
Yep.
Um, I'd like to make a motion that Westminster Select Board authorized the distribution of twelve-hundred-and-fifty dollars to the...
Um, the municipal planning grant for a walk-bike plan for Westminster and Rockingham.
Thank you. For a feasibility study.
It is, but, yeah, it's...
So motion has been made.
It's a claim.
Seconded.
Thank you.
Yep.
Are you all ready to follow the plan once it's completed?
No.
Okay, I'm just, there's a motion on the board.
Plans that have like a hundred things in it, and you sort of...
You can pick and choose what you want to do. If you don't want to do that.
They, they also will prioritize the least expensive and the most expensive. And remember, it's not just Route 121, it's Westminster West Road, it's Route 5, it's the trails that connect our two towns.
Connecting bald hill trails, um, oak hill trails.
We've got an action report, which is what I'm going to say.
Yeah, it's my loss.
And public engagement is a huge part of it, so everyone who lives on, um, North Westminster, come to the meetings, uh, talk about it, and, um, yeah.
Yes, Melly?
The part of that motion is going to be pending we have the funds available, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melly.
Would that work for our application, Gary?
When, when is your...
Well, I, I will give you the, um, uh, this is the, the resolution. It's two-sided, and this is where you...
What's the motion? That's the... I'm trying to turn this on.
Yes, yeah. But so that, that whole, um, this, yeah, the, the whole thing is being, um, supported, or say nominated by the planning commission, and then approved by the select board, is what that resolution is.
All right, motion, made and seconded, so we haven't voted yet.
Okay.
Did you have a comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, moving on.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, you'll be hearing a lot from us.
That's pretty good. Good holiday day.
Yeah, you too. Yes, I'm with you. Windmill Hill Letter of Support, so this is, I have a letter being pushed for Windmill Hill one. So at the last meeting, um, this is not in with here, anyone? Excuse me, about the purchase and conservation, purchasing ninety-six acres. Would you have it?
I'm sorry, uh, oh...
Oh, there's a letter.
The letter, I signed and she took.
Oh, she took it, okay. I was going to read the letter, but now I'm not, so...
It was what we talked at last, about last meeting.
Yes, okay, so we just need to make a motion. Kevin was not here.
Right.
Um, so Dan or Stephen?
I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve the letter of support, uh, to the Vermont Housing Conservation Board
That's right.
to, uh, concerning the Windmill Hill Pinnacle Association acquisition of ninety-six acres on Old Athens Road, and twelve acres south of the road at eighty-four acres north of the road.
It's a total of ninety-six acres.
Total ninety-six acres, and you could probably stop it there, minutes there, but ninety-six. Quite, the grant to purchase and conserve ninety-six acres on Old Athens Road.
Motion has been made.
Seconded.
Motion has been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
I would stand only because I don't know the facts of what was ever there.
Today, I have a letter of support from us.
Okay, well, I guess, but it, it goes for, you don't need my vote.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Barry, applaud.
Good evening, um, know all those who are present. I so move the Vermont Select Board with the following cemetery plot that the town of Westminster and the county of Wyndham, State of Vermont, uh, in the consideration with a sum of four-hundred-and-sixty dollars. Uh, the receipt whereof is thus hereby knowledge, has, and thus hereby freely, um, missed, released, and forever quit claim unto Rosalyn Shawl of Westminster in the county of Wyndham and State of Vermont, and her heirs, and assigns forever, not one, two burial homes located in...
not one, two burial homes located in section B, row 19, and bounded on the east by empty, on the north by empty, and the west by stone wall as property line, and on the south by stone wall as property line in the Westminster West Cemetery. And perpetual care thereon, subject to whatever restrictions are imposed by law. This convention is subject nevertheless to the express condition that said lot or plot of land shall be used, possessed and occupied exclusively for the purpose of cemetery and for objects and purposes incident thereto, and for no other objects and purposes, and subject also to such regulation now existing or hereafter to be made and provided under the laws of Vermont by said board of cemetery commissioners and their successors in office. Witness by hand and seal this 25th day in October 23, in presence of Kevin Hughes, member of Westminster by Philou authorization, Katrina Hamilton, Select Board chair. I have it right here for you.
That was the motion, that was the motion.
That's the motion.
Sorry. It's written, it's written down already.
It's all written.
So this is routine, uh, routine, all, just a lot of routine verbiage for a burial lot.
Yeah.
All right. Who's seconding? Steven's seconding motion is the main seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Adam, care, your signature, mine not.
Moving on to road foreman's report.
Uh, so we are currently ditching up on Milinkovic Road, which is, I don't know whether you know where it is. It's off of Murcher's, which is off of Burns Road, which is where Steven resides.
Oh, yeah.
Up past him. So it's, it's, it's essentially, it's a mile long private driveway. Um, that currently has been, um, I, I'm not sure it's been resold or all of a sudden they've started working on it.
They started working on the house.
What's that?
They started working on the house. The, um, uh, the owner of the house, uh, the county camp, um, finally got around to getting a contractor to rig the roof and we finished installation and uh but the house, the road goes to the house.
So during, during the winter, we've been running into some challenges. They've been frequenting it more than they used to. Uh, you just have to pour it up in the door yard to turn around. Now you can't do cars in the yard, whatever. Um, Cory said he's back a mile down the road. You plow up one side, back down a mile, turn your plow and plow back up a mile. So I've talked to, finally got ahold of the landlord, I talked to him and we're doing a turnaround. Before the house, we're gonna ditch the road, we're cleaning the shoulders and the ditches out using that material to establish a turnaround. So, uh, so we're working on that.
As long as the turnaround doesn't um lock the access to the field, I, I, I'm gonna take my tractor and load the field down, down below the road.
No, uh, you, you know what? There's a spruce tree just before the house on the right hand side.
Yeah.
On that flat, we're cutting down the spruce tree.
Yeah, it's kind of dying, yeah.
Yeah. That was the part of the field, we're gonna rig the spruce tree, essentially where that spruce tree is now.
Culvert, right next to there.
The culvert is below it.
Yeah, right below that.
Yep. So where the spruce tree is now is going to be the turner.
And that's quite close to his septic field, weed field, isn't it? That lawn is his weed field?
I know. I put it where he wanted it.
Okay, uh, caution.
Does he know where his septic system is?
Yeah, uh, well, I, I, I've been.
It didn't look to me like I put a lot of septic. It didn't look like that was maybe closer to the house, this is septic field.
They, they do, um, the, I thought the reason why that was a flattish lawn space was because that was originally put in for the septic weed field.
This is quite a ways from the house, though.
I don't know.
No, I don't know. If you, if you're riding around, take a zip up there, you'll see right where we started.
You started right again.
Yeah. And if, they, they've only put a couple of loads there.
Yeah.
I stopped them because it was kind of mucky. They're taking it somewhere else right now, but when they start cleaning the gravel off the shoulders, that's where they're gonna put it. If you think that's a problem, then I gotta get ahold of the landlord.
I, I think.
Because he might not know.
I think he might not know because he, the, the, he, he, he bought the house from a heir from a family sort of who were the friend down New York and um uh, he doesn't spend a lot of time there. It is, it is worth checking that it doesn't go into the weed field. But I mean, you can just cover it.
Wow. But I mean, if you think it's a problem, I'm, I'm open to, you, you lived there your whole life.
Uh, I, so my problem is I don't know where the weed field is, but that's where it was put in when I was six. So I don't know exactly where. But it, um, and the other, the other thing of, of slight note there, um, I assume that once you put it in, you'll, you'll see it down. It's sort of his lawn, but he doesn't mow it very much.
Right.
And it does happen to be where the Westminster West Congregational Church Easter Sunrise Service is, right there.
On his lawn?
On the lawn, right there, right, right by the spruce tree. Which would be fine, as long as, as long as the turnaround is, you know, evenly graded down the lawn.
Yeah, there'll be room for parking.
Yeah, room for parking. Um, but anyway, that's uh, um, the, the, those are just things to know, to know about. You don't have to back down that road and get stuck in the ditch. It's not. Um, the, uh, sorry, details of this. Of course, tremendous water, water coming out of that hill there was, um, uh, there's two ponds. Um, the upper little pond essentially collected water and then drained into a, now a con- concrete like ditch below the dam of the second, of the bigger pond. And then that has been, now that upper pond will recently be that upper.
Recording in progress.
Sorry.
Dagel Road, um, I don't know whether, I mean, there wasn't a warned meeting there, but it was a consensus of this would be a logical work to do on the.
So Ben, Jason, I, and Ally were down there with Tammy one day just to, I went down because I didn't know, I don't know history. I was trying to just familiarize myself with the issues down there. Um, and then it became a, a bigger thing. Um, and so essentially things weren't moving fast enough. And so the state is involved. And so there's a meeting that I think is tentatively scheduled for November 8th, actually, um, at 10 a.m., which is a Wednesday.
Is that, is that a select board meeting?
It's, it's a meeting between state engineers, of the landowner, Chuck, probably Ben, and I would say probably any select board members that want to attend so that they are aware of what is going on would be helpful.
The, the broad story is the landowner is not satisfied with, with the plan or with the work?
And there, and there's a significant amount of history behind it too. And I have also invited Larry to attend because he has given a legal opinion on it previously as well. So, but I didn't find out about that meeting, the time of the meeting until today. So.
So, so as, as general information, there would be a meeting for which select board members can come to observe at 10 o'clock on November.
8.
8.
And I was going to find out if there was a quorum, not a quorum, but that was.
So i- if it was going to be a quorum, we might warrant, make it a meeting. Um, otherwise it's just select board members can go and get educated.
Correct.
Uh, by the process.
There is a regularly scheduled select board meeting that Wednesday evening, anyway. Yes.
Historically, that's what we have done. We have all gone.
Uh, sorry, gone, gone to had it, had it outside.
On this particular issue.
On this particular issue.
Six years, we have always gone.
We have gone as a select board member.
As a select board.
It seems like we.
Before a meeting, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Uh, it seems like we're, we have a we are allowing a great deal of discretion to this landowner to, to call full select board meetings after whim. Um, but anyway.
I, I agree with all my prior colleagues that it, from a statutory standpoint and just from a knowledge standpoint, if anything ever came of it, we could not, no one could ever say that we were not all up there, we did not all hear it, and we did not all have our view.
But, but, but a more normal way would, would be for a discussion between uh people who wanted to be, to hear, hear, hear the story and, and the road crew and whatever state road people.
That's how it's always been.
And then it would be, but, but that the action would be taken at a, a regular board meeting on the recommendation of our town manager.
Which we can do that.
Right, but we're all there. And the last time I was up there, I don't remember when, the, uh, the state person was there and it clarifies for the board members, um, for those of us who are not skilled in, in this type of engineering work, it gives us a basic understanding of exactly what's at issue, what the landowner's purpose is or her position is. And that way we walk and say, we were there, we heard it. And that's how it should be. That's how life in here should be.
Yep, but it just seems extraordinary to me to have one landowner dragging us around repeatedly.
And, and I agree.
It seems, that sounds like this is repeatedly dragging the board around, and maybe even the state officials around.
Yes.
As opposed to the normal channel of coming to a logical conclusion and then having a road foreman and then our town manager just making a recommendation for us and saying, and if we have to spend any money, we need to be authorized spending money, but we, um.
Right. If that's what you want to do, that's fine, me too.
Yeah.
Are we ready?
I, I, I just wanted to know sort of a wonder where, why, why, why we're doing this. So that sounds like it has been done before.
Right.
Multiple times.
Yes.
So what's the pleasure? Uh, what are we doing?
I, I just need to know.
Yeah.
So we're just saying that there's a meeting on 11/8 at 10 o'clock. Dagel Road residents, we're not mentioning who, what, why, where, state engineers, landowner involved. I don't know, but.
Um, it, I don't, I don't know. I guess I can make, I don't know if it's legalities, I don't know.
I, 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 I guess, I would prefer it not, not be uh, a, a warned select board meeting. We have one that night anyway.
Right.
That, um, people can come to be informed if they have uh the opportunity to do so.
They have to be warned if you're all there, though.
It doesn't have to be warned we're all there, we just can't conduct any business.
Right.
We can, we can all meet uh, uh, in the, uh, school um, and say hello to each other and conduct no business. That's fine. We can all go to a school concert. Um, what we can't do is conduct
Business.
select board business.
Okay.
If it's not warned. So if it happens to be a quorum, so long as we're not conducting business.
Right.
We're not even making a consensus decision of what to do.
Which I wasn't, I didn't want it to be a select board meeting then.
Right. And the last three have just been fact finding. They're just fact finding.
Essentially, that's all it is. Fact finding.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just, uh, yeah.
I'm just a.
Concerned that, that every such, you know, issue gets treated the same way and not with one person getting six successive, successive full select board meetings on their personal issue.
Fair point. Uh, how do we follow the end here?
Just do the meeting, but don't warrant a select board meeting unless it's absolutely necessary.
Very good.
Not, it's not necessary.
You will have a select board meeting that night.
So just put it in the me, just put it as it is. Okay, great. Thank you.
Anything else? Um, we are going to have an executive session because we need to discuss amendments to a contract.
Excellent.
So, I will make a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Kevin.
Second.
So can I just ask one more question? That Dagel Road is not on here. Is that part of the road foreman's report?
No, that was a comment.
Well, it was my, it was my inquiry in the topic of road issues at the road foreman's authority.
So it's an inquiry.
I have a detail say on it.
Okay.
It's covered, it's covered for the.
Okay, executive session, I'll add, yeah, uh, Kevin, Dan, uh, to, I'm sorry, uh, contract.
Contractual matter.
Contractual matter. Thank you. Now you gotta have a motion.
Yep, I need a motion.
Go with executive session.
Yes.
I make motion, go with executive session.
Second.
Motion for made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Recording stopped.
You doing town hall roof, like you added that?
Oh, sure, I forgot.
Recording in progress.
It's all right. I, I'm just, it was just.
Sorry, Millie.
No, it's fine. You just added it.
Executive session.
We can just do it right now.
Let's do it right now. What is it we're doing?
Town hall roof, we need to amend our motion for.
So we, we thought we made a motion to, the bid was for 13, was it 13 or something? We're doing a change. And we, we thought we had made a motion to approve up to 2,000, assuming they'd find a few other things. And in the minutes, it came out at 13. So, and then she said, she saw the recording, and so somehow our 2,000 didn't get it.
Our intention did not get through.
Our intention didn't come through. So we're just, we're going about it.
Okay, very much.
Town hall roof.
I made a motion that we prove up to 2,000 instead of the 1,300 to fix and repair the slate on the roof, the bid went right to BJ Brown or whatever.
So seconded.
Repair slate, Kevin.
Seconded, yes.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Boards, committees, and commissions.
A note from the planning commission in that. Believe one member is resigning, many more members.
Yeah.
And there is a confusion within the planning commission about whether a select board member myself, who's been attending meetings as select board rep and alternate, there's confusion about whether, in order to keep a quorum going in the planning commission, which is now, now at risk, that, that whether I can be appointed by this body as a planning commission member, since I'm there anyway, and thus keep a quorum going so they can continue doing the business in the town plan, because right now we're going, gonna have to go through some public meetings and all to just simply restamp our old town plan with new census figures. And, but the planning commission will be dead in the water if it doesn't have a quorum. And right now, it's without me, I think it doesn't have a quorum unless somebody else is, is appointed. And then there was a question, am I allowed to be appointed? And a former member had questioned the League of Citizen Towns and appeared to get one answer. And Katrina, you quite queried them too, appeared to get another answer about whether a select board member can vote on the planning commission. Seems no brainer to me, but I guess I would be happy to be appointed to the planning commission, if that's okay, if that's okay with the state authorities.
We need to find out.
If there's no prohibition to that.
What's going on.
We do need to find out exactly what the rule is.
So, so that's.
What do you have there?
Well, yes, I, I quit.
I mean, I can do it, too.
I just don't know the contacts, that's all.
So, get the contacts.
Two sending, I think.
Figure out the real point here, if that's what we can do.
I will.
Yeah, I just need, you need a connection. Is this, is this okay? Is this, and if they officially say, and I don't know why the League of Citizen Towns has, they're helpful to us.
Yes.
Are they actually, do they have this governing authority to say, yes, it's okay?
They give us, they give us an opinion.
Yes.
And is that gonna be good enough for everybody?
I think it will direct us to whether or not our select board has precedence, in their opinion, to go either way. That is where they will, they will find out. That's what they are usually doing. We can also contact the secretary of state's office. They are incredibly helpful in these matters as well. I don't wanna put her on the spot like we're, we're going, did we?
Yeah.
I'll give you the name of the really wonderful attorney over there.
She's lovely.
She's incredible.
Over where?
At the LCT.
Yes.
And the secretary of state.
And, yes, she's.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Well, hey, what the cemetery gave you.
Um, good. So that was that, and I think the planning commission is now going forward with the reapproval of the old town plan in abeyance of having finished this one on time. And yeah, we do need to, we do need to work on the new town plan. Richard was doing some great work on, one of our big issues is, is, we used to think that our, our main issue with housing was housing for, for elderly. But it's really basically, we need more housing, and one of the things that's really emerged since we wrote our town plan is the accessory dwelling units. The in-law apartment thing, that our town plan could be more accommodating of that, so that we could be more accommodating in zoning and everything else of accessory dwelling units so that we can allow people affordable housing in a minimal square.
Appreciate your input. I think when we get the town manager in place, that person, this'll, this is something that town manager traditionally on the planning board takes in control. It's a good first work for him, and he can do the recruiting and
Yeah.
he'll get it done. I'm sure he'll get it done.
Yeah.
And that way, we'll have a full quorum again. This will be behind us.
Yeah, and frankly, I would like to be able to turn to the town manager and say, hey, is it okay? And they say, yes, no.
There you go.
And Bob Jones.
Very good.
Anything else for boards, committees, and commissions? And apparently the cemetery gave us under other business, I didn't see that.
That's alright.
Any other business? Alright, cool. Date of next meeting, Wednesday, November 8th, 2023.
This meeting was recorded by Falls Area Community Television, located at One Hospital Court, Bellows Falls, Vermont. If you would like a copy of the meeting, our phone number is 802-463-1613. Or email us at fact@10@gmail.com. Falls Area Community TV, keeping government honest.